It is 9:07 and I'm going to call this meeting of the planning commission to order. Going to establish that we have a quorum present. We have six out of the seven members here. First item is the consent agenda. The commission may request for a consent agenda item to be removed from the regular agenda for presentation of public comment. Otherwise, the consent agenda will be considered in one vote. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by staff with no opposition received to date. Since some of the items on the consent agenda may require a public hearing, the commission will accept public comment on any item on the consent agenda in one public hearing. So I'm going to open it up for public comment. I'm going to close public comment. Does anyone wish to remove an item on the consent agenda? I'd like to pull the item C. So we have a replat for A. And a final plat which is item D. Excuse me. A is the minutes. B is the replat. And item's D. Does anyone wish to make a motion on the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve A, B, and D.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. The exception of item C. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Six zero. So Jeff, I'm looking through the packet and it looks like there was a note of opposition on this case. That's why I pulled it. Okay? Believe it was this one.
There should only be one letter in support from the school district. We did not receive any opposed that I'm aware of.
Okay, so this sheet right here. Shows one in favor and one opposed. Is that for this case?
Okay. May have an oversight on my part. Yes. So that's number eight? Yeah, okay. So it should be one and one then?
I'm sorry?
School District 20, which is number 21, is in support. And then at number eight would be opposed. So we'd have one and one.
Number eight, okay.
And they did not call or give any additional information as to why they were opposed.
Okay, do you mind just going through the brief overview of the case for the?
No, absolutely. So this was three lots. Or let me start. Molina Heights, Jeff Fisher, chief planner. Molina Heights addition. It's a replat of three lots. They're all facing Fortieth Street. They want to have two facing Crockett and then two skinnier lots now facing Fortieth. They all comply with zoning. It's a residential infill project, so they're going from three lots essentially to four. Zoning's RS1. And so this is, they have an existing house on the corner over here. So they meet all the setbacks, so they'd have another home here and then two more over here. So you'd have from three lots up to four lots. So the additional lot. They got a variance, an administrative variance on the front yard setback facing Crockett. So it's 24.4 feet. By taking the 15 feet of right of way, Crockett kind of swivels, so it kind of curves around like that, which is not the best in terms of right of way. So they had to dedicate the 15 feet to meet the minimum 50-foot right of way anyway. When they did that, they made the front yard setback deficient. We know the real street doesn't start until to the west of that 15-foot right of way line. So we were in support of the variance. It was a difference of .6 feet. So that's what the case is. It's basically to infill, reorient a couple of the lots, and then add a fourth lot. And so, yes, so what should be one and one. Thank you for correcting that. These are some of the pictures of the area. So you can kind of see, this is probably the best picture if you're going southbound on Crockett. It does kind of, the street kind of curves a little bit, but it's still 40 feet wide. So planning and engineering, we're okay with that. But we did want the right of way, just to keep the right of way line the same. And that was it. One copy of, one condition, just a copy of the tax certificate.
Okay. Anyone have questions for the staff? Okay, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case? Please come forward, state your name and address or single member district. All right, I'm going to close public comment. There's no, there's no detail in the packet on the opposition. It just says that I oppose.
Correct.
I'm not sure what that, what their opposition is for. But...
And unfortunately, we don't, it's sometimes difficult to get phone numbers or things. So we'll have addresses and names. But then it'll be the follow-up part. If they don't come in and call us, it'd be more difficult. But my guess is they probably just didn't know what was going on or they were confused.
Okay. Anyone wish to make a motion?
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Six zero. All right, regular agenda. Rezonings. The city council has final authority for approval of rezonings. Item A, Z2219, 1901 Junius Street. Request for approval of a rezoning from the single-family residential zoning district to the neighborhood commercial zoning district being .435 acres located at 1901 Junius.
Good morning, everybody. Ray Lineberry, planner. So 1901 Junius Street is .435 acres and it's at the corner of Harrison and Junius Street. And it's in Mr. Thompson's district in Angelo Heights neighborhood. So if you look, it looks like there was commercial right next to it. So it would just be adding on the last three lots. And the neighborhood, 12 notices were mailed out. We didn't receive any in support or opposition. The neighborhood commercial is in a intersection right next to a Little League baseball field. They want to put a mobile food truck. So we think it would be great in that area. It's consistent with the future and comprehensive plan. And we are recommending approval to go from residential to neighborhood commercial for the three lots.
Okay. Anyone have questions for the staff? Sorry, my packet's mixed up here. I don't have, for some reason, I don't think I got the information on that case. Or I got it out of order.
Or it's taken from somewhere else.
Yeah, here it is. So you show commercial zoning to the west of the, of the site?
Yes. It is, it is actually, I was going to see if, there we go. So this lot right there next to it is neighborhood commercial. The rest of this is commercial. And then on this side that you can't see is neighborhood commercial. So it would be kind of just filling out that.
Okay, are the uses of those improvements commercial? Or are they zoned commercial?
I know two of them are commercial.
Okay.
I'm not sure about the rest.
I think they're all commercial, Travis.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Anyone else have questions for the staff? I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case? Please come forward.
I'm the owner.
Yes ma'am, you're welcome to come forward and speak if you'd like.
Hello, my name is Jacenia Gonzalez. And I'm, I'm the owner of the property.
Okay.
And we just bought it last year. And we're planning like to put some like food truck or, for now, it's a food truck. But later, we want to build like, I don't know, we have too many options. But all that block, it's commercial. So we were like, it's just like our lots and it's the same blocks. So yeah, that's why I'm here.
Okay.
Yeah, but thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment. Anyone wish to make a motion?
I second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Conditional uses. The planning commission has final authority for approval of conditional uses. Appeals may be directed to the city council. CU 2214, 1030 Spalding Street. Request for approval of a conditional use to allow a retail store in the light manufacturing zoning district located at 1030 Spalding Street.
Thank you, commissioners. Jeff Fisher, chief planner. Our next case today is for a retail store, conditional use in an industrial zone. This is a unique area where a lot of this swath of ML zoning, but there's not really that many industrial uses. They've been more commercial oriented. So just to give you proximity, to the west of this property is the roller rink. And you've got a football field over here. So again, this is ML, but not really an ML use. And you've got the Texas Railway. And then as you go east of here, there's residential. So it's kind of a transition in the middle. They could have rezoned it to something like CG, but then because they wanted to do retail store with outdoor storage, they'd be limited to 10%. So once they put in their parking and all their things, they're probably going to be limited anyway, but at least they would have a little bit more space to work with. So they wanted to keep the underlying ML zoning, who knows, but do a conditional use for retail store with both indoor and outdoor display. It's in District 3, Harry Thomas, in the Fort Concho East neighborhood, zoning's ML. 11 notices were mailed out. One in support from the school district. As part of our new notification standard, we are sending out copies of all notifications for planning cases to the mayor, the council, single member district, council member, and the school district. So that's, I put there in brackets. It's not within 200 feet. There was no school property, but the district did respond and gave their blessing. So we do have one in support. This is the, the concept plan. This is very rough. You're not approving this today. This is just an outline of what you're looking at. They're going to need a change of occupancy anyway, and a plan to the planning director to review with other departments, just to make sure those sales areas are appropriate and the parking. But generally, the retail store will go into the existing house, the white roof building at the bottom. They'll have some sales areas outside. And then they'll have their, their parking lot. And again, with the new parking ordinance, outdoor areas that the public can access, not the storage of, but just the walkable areas will count as part of that retail space. So I've advised the owner of that. You may actually end up having to, every 200 square feet, you're going to need another parking spot. You may want to just scale it down a little bit. And she said that would be fine. Again, the planning director will review the final plan. We did want a fence in these areas, not where the driveway is, but just behind the parking and the storage. There is a residence across the street. The ML has no height restriction. So just having a six-foot fence here, just in these little gaps, would just provide some buffering from the neighbor to the east side of Buchanan. So this is the property here. It's a blue painted building. Just says metal building on appraisal. So they'll, they may need to, they will need to do a change of occupancy to get that into, to retail. We checked that. This is west of the property. And then there's the house across the street. So pretty straightforward. It's, we believe it's a good transition from the ML zoning to the west and the RS1 zoning to the east. It's going to comply with the zoning ordinance. They're going to have to provide parking. And then conditions of approval include that privacy fence. If they are putting any lighting, they'll just have to have shields and, you know, things like normal conditional use standards. So we recommend approval subject to the four conditions. The underlying zoning is the CH standards. We put that in there because that allows them the unlimited outdoor storage. Any lighting needs to be fully shielded. Applicant has 12 months to obtain a change of occupancy. And we'll review that with, with planning as well, just to make sure that other departments, also to make sure that they meet the standards. And four, the applicant enters into a unity agreement to tie the two lots together, since they are two actually plotted lots and the building sits over it, but they can do that. So this concludes our presentation. The applicant is here. If anyone has any questions or comments.
Any questions for the staff? All right. Thank you, Jeff. We're going to open it up for public comment. If you wish to speak on this case, please come forward. State your name and single member district or address, please.
Hi, my name is Maricela. I'm the, I speak English a little bit, not too better, but I have a little store. And I want to, I want to, I don't know, sell something in the store.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else want to speak? I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Make a motion to approve as accepted, as except as presented.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six zero. Item B, CU 2215, 103 and 107 West 14th Street. A request for approval of a conditional use to allow household living in a religious bookstore, excuse me, and a religious bookstore with gifts in the office commercial zoning district located at 103 and 107 West 14th Street.
Okay. So y'all have probably seen this property before. Some of you that were here in 2009, they got, 2019. Wow. 2019, so it's not that long ago. They got approval for a church for a conditional use. They've decided now that they want to make some changes. They came in, tried to do a CN zoning, were denied. So then they came in to do a CO zoning. And the reason they did the CO zoning, this got approved last month by council, was to allow an underlying books, religious bookstore in that property. Since that time, they've talked to us about taking a part of the building and using it for residential living and then having the other half for the residential bookstore. So that's what y'all will be approving today. The CO zoning now allows the church by right. If they ever want to come back and put a church in there, they can. But today, you're just looking at, is household living appropriate and religious bookstore appropriate in, in that building? So this is District 4, Lucy Gonzalez in Blackshear, zoning CO. 23 notices were mailed out. We got one in support from the school district, again, not within the 200 feet. Okay, and this is the concept plan that was already approved and part of the site plan. What I've added there is the, the four parking spots that they're going to have to stripe in that purple outline area. So there's, they've got all the pavement out there now because when they did their first conditional use for the church, they had already paved everything, put in the fencing. So there's not really much to do here, but other than repeat most of the conditions from before. The change would be, putting in the bookstore is going to require four new spots. The residential living requires two, and they've already paved two. So they just need to add basically four lines over here and be done with it. This is looking at the property today. They put in their sidewalk. The one thing they, they missed in their original, and they've agreed to do it, is they just plant two shrubs. That was part of a landscape plan that they need to fulfill. So we'll, we made that a condition as, as well from the previous condition. So basically, stripe the four new spots and put in the two shrubs and they should be good. No adverse impacts. The site was already developed. The paved parking lot's already there. It's compatible with the surrounding area. And there is a church and a funeral home in this area. So this one's a little bit easier to justify than the CN zoning. I think a regular retail store, a restaurant, might be too intense, but I think a religious bookstore with the residents there, it used to be RS2, is, is compatible. So staff's in support of this. The five conditions of approval. They get the change of occupancy within 12 months. Includes a final development plan. Basically, show everything that's out there now, but add the, the four stripes for the parking and the two shrubs. Again, just some of these are repeats. Just maintain the existing sidewalk because it's already been done. No driveway access from North Irving Street. That was from before. We, we want to keep that in there. Lighting, shielded. And then approval of this conditional use revokes and replaces the church conditional use, which is no longer needed because the CO zoning already allows the church. So any questions or comments on this one? And the applicants are here. If you have any questions for them?
Okay. Anyone have questions for the staff? All right, we're going to open it up for public comment.
Hi, good morning. I'm sure y'all are used to seeing us here by now, but we just wanted to make sure that y'all didn't have any questions and, or wonder why we changed after trying so hard to get it from an RS2 to a CO, why we chose to move across the street.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, this looks like a, a building with an identity crisis to me. We've, to be completely honest, we've, we've seen this project four or five times now. It was, it was going to be a church, then it was going to be a coffee shop, then it was going to be an office building. Now it's going to be a bookstore with a residence. I, I understand you guys are struggling to figure out what to do with this building. I personally, I don't support retail use for this, for this location. So I understand that a religious bookstore is on the, the lower volume spectrum of probably what a retail use would be, but I, I'm not going to support this. I'm sorry.
Well, I don't think it has an identity crisis. We did ministry there to begin with.
Okay.
And we came to the city to ask for, to have a coffee shop because coffee shop and ministry go hand in hand. We were told we could have one and then told later on that we couldn't have one. And so then it was like, okay, what do we do now? With COVID, you know, a lot of people weren't attending church. So we came for an office commercial with the intention of having a bookstore. And we finally got that approved. However...
I'm not, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Why would an, why would a religious bookstore be office commercial use? Wouldn't that be retail?
Yeah, I think the idea was that, that the commercial, neighborhood commercial was not supported originally.
Right.
And so it, it was kind of a two-for-one thing where they, in order to do the religious bookstore, we thought that the office commercial zoning would be appropriate, followed with a conditional use. So I, I wouldn't view those two things as separate, like they came for office commercial and then decided that didn't work and they're now coming back for this.
Well, and in all fairness, John, this is, that's how it's being presented to us. No one told us before, when we were changing the zoning to office commercial, that it was going to be a religious bookstore. Or I wouldn't have supported that. I didn't support that.
Yes, it was presented last time as a bookstore. It was.
Okay. Well, I didn't support it last time.
No, but you, you could, it's completely okay for you to support the office commercial, which it was zoned to.
Right.
The conditional use was another step that they always intended. But you can approve the office commercial without approving this conditional use today. If you're okay with office, but not okay with retail.
Right.
That's, that's obviously up to you all. But from their perspective, in their discussions with us, that was really their intent all along.
Okay.
And Travis, the other reason, or Chair Stribling, the other reason we did this is because with the CO, they would be limited to just office uses, which are usually less intense than retail. So just having the bookstore as one additional use, we would be able, by doing a conditional use with a CO underlying, we'd be able to impose conditions on it. Whereas if they just did straight zoning, not only could we not impose conditions, but then they could do a lot of other things that we don't want there. So staff said isn't support. We understand. But that was the rationale for it. And that way, they still have some uses that they can do under the CO. And then if they do, if we do get approved of the bookstore, they're going to have conditions to make absolutely sure that, you know, traffic, parking, and all of that was reviewed.
Well, and I'll add one more thing. You may be completely opposed, but if, if the one thing you all have the ability to do is add additional conditions. So for example, in similar situations, we've, you know, within a neighborhood, we've limited hours of operations. So
Sure.
I mean, I, I would guess a religious bookstore, you don't have to worry about being open 24 hours a day. But that's something you could limit. If you could think of other things that might be the negatives, you could place additional conditions if, if you so choose.
Okay. Well, I, I didn't mean to attack you guys. I, I guess I'm a little frustrated that we continue to see this case and there's a new idea, a different concept. I, I'm, now I'm frustrated that I wasn't made aware of the, the full intention that you guys had the last time that we saw this case. So I, I would support residential occupancy, which you guys have proposed as portion, a portion of this. But I think that there was, I recall there being opposition from, from neighbors in this area when the proposed coffee shop was, was brought through. And I remember the city council debating and discussing the, the traffic associated with the retail use in this location. When they elected not to overturn our ruling for retail use. And so that's, just sharing my thoughts with you guys.
Well, again, the coffee shop was presented to us. It wasn't our idea. Somebody else from the city suggested, why don't we do that? Because we were going to close down ministry because of COVID.
Okay.
Only to find out that we weren't. Now, fast forward to that we're approved for office commercial.
Yes ma'am.
We thought that that's what we were going to do. And I wasn't going to bring this up. But the reason that we want to move there is because lots happened since the last time that we were here. My husband was diagnosed with a baseball-sized mass. And thank God that it wasn't cancer. But he had complications. To the surgeon was fighting for his life. So after 30 years of being in the HVAC business, where he's, he has to stop working. So we chose, we have properties across the street that we own, three properties. And we've chosen to sell them and to move across the street into this business. But we still want to be in the, the lines of ministry, but also have something to sustain us. So that's why we chose to move over there and to have this little business on the other side. And as far as the neighbor that was opposing us, he was here. And he came and he spoke to us and he was like, I'm so worried I'm going to have to sell my house. If y'all are going to make this commercial. I said, well, we're coming here because we want to move next door. And he was so happy. And he shook our hands and he said, welcome, neighbor. You don't know, you just made my day. And he spoke to Jeff and he changed his, his paper, I believe.
Okay.
So we do, the one neighbor that opposed us, not the eight that were in favor of it, but the one that opposed us is the very one today that, that is happy that we're going to do what we're going to do, which is a bookstore and a residence.
Wonderful. Okay. Thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this? Okay, I'm going to close public comment and open it up for discussion here.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I don't have a problem with this. I know that what we need to do is put this building back to rest. And the way that they're discussing it, you know, it's, religious bookstores are not that busy.
Yes.
And I think if anything, what I see is more of bringing the community together. You know, it's, it's, it's something that will bring a little bit of a closure. And I think, you know, from the fact that there's no residents in opposition, I, I think I'm in favor of this.
Okay.
I agree with Turner. And looking at, you know, the coffee shop versus a bookstore, if you think about like a general coffee shop, the come and go traffic is quicker. There's going to be more of that.
More frequent, yeah.
Whereas a bookstore, you're, generally, you're going to be in there longer browsing, speaking to the owner, having gospel conversations, or whatever the case might be. So I'm in full support of the residence along with the bookstore.
Okay.
Yes.
Anyone else wish to, someone wish to make a motion or share their thoughts?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six zero. All right, discussion item. Presentation and discussion on city notification procedures.
Good morning, Planning Commission. Aaron Vanoy, Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services. So I just want to kind of go over some of our basics and really just have kind of that open discussion or forum here with the planning commission of, do we need to modify or, or add some things to our notifications so that our community's being properly notified? Of course, going to go quickly through the state and local requirements, our processes and timelines, what our sister, sister cities do. Say that fast real few times. Have a discussion as well as an impact of a case called Acuna versus the City of Austin, which that deals with notification when it comes to maybe a land use, say RS1. And we, the, the city and planning commission has said, hey, we want to make a change to an RS1 to allow something different than what's on the books now. How do we go about proper notification? Or is it a dual meeting, which y'all have experienced that once or maybe twice in the past that I can remember, and why that's kind of... And why that's kind of going to be coming forward as maybe a process the entire state is trying to grapple with and deal with. So, that's kind of the overview. I know, hopefully you got in your packets the information that I'd sent it out. So, zoning cases by state law, they have very specific things that need to be done. One is that newspaper notice. That is the legal way for cities to notice the public that a zoning case, a rezoning, is happening somewhere. Now, we all know newspapers are certainly slowing down in circulation. That's been asked to be addressed at the city legis, the city legislature, the state legislature, but it has not changed yet of what that legal notification out in the newspaper. They also, in that same code, say that you need to do a 200-foot notice buffer. And that is from the property lines, not from the center of the property, but from the property lines, what is 200-foot around that. And the reason they go with the 200-foot, because then they look at a 20% of opposition. Sometimes when there's 20% of opposition, we have to calculate if we have to have a supermajority, whether at this level or at the city council level, to make a zone change. Our annexation is slightly different from the state. Again, it has a state code and we have a local ordinance that coincides with it. It actually allows the website notification, and they have very specific things in which we have to put in that notification. And so, we place that on our website, we do place that in our, we have a specific spot on our website for legal notices. So, anything that we notice legally goes, gets put there, sale of land, annexation, different things that happen within the city. So, we put that on our website and we do a 200-foot notice buffer. The interesting thing about the 200-foot notice buffer, and fortunately Brandon with our legal team is here and he can tell me, let me research that. And I forgot to ask him, it's, I don't think it says the municipal tax rolls, where zonings and some other things say municipal tax rolls. So, I'm not sure. I know we have historically done just within the city, or just in the area around that. And John or Brandon, I just want to clarify to make sure I'm saying it correctly. That buffer, does it include outside the city limits as well, or?
No.
Okay.
I mean, it's on the municipal tax.
It is on the municipal tax rolls.
Whatever's in the city.
So, in the past, we've gone back and forth. As Brandon said, state law only requires that we notify people, properties within the city limits. So, at some points in the past, the city has notified everybody within 200 feet, even if they're outside the city limits.
Yeah.
More recently, we only have been doing what's required by state law. I think I've mentioned this, but a few years ago, the city council basically chastised staff, saying, we want you only to notify what's required by state law. We were, I guess to be fair to the council, we were sometimes picking and choosing. We thought, oh, this is a controversial thing, let's notify a little larger, or let's notify outside the city limits.
Right.
And they said, no, you notify what is required by ordinance and by state statute. And so, since that time, that's what we've done. And of course, this process that we're going through right now could change that if, if you all have recommendations for more notification than, than what's required. But that, that's where we stand right now. So, we do not notify beyond 200 feet. And we also do not notify properties that are outside the city limits.
Okay.
Yeah, and thank you for clarifying that, because that was the one I just didn't quite remember where zonings, we really can't rezone properties that aren't annexed yet. And so, we always do on the municipal tax rolls as well as our residential replats. The state code and our local code is just a little bit different. Our local code is a little more strict, so we adhere to that. And really, the difference being, the state code talks about the newspaper notice if there's a variance or an, or an exception. We always do that 15 days before the Planning Commission. Then they have a thing about the 200-foot notice, but they say you, we, the staff, can do it up to 15 days after Planning Commission. However, if you go back and look at our local ordinance, we say if it's RS1 or RS2, we notice in the local newspaper, just like we do with the state, and we have to do the 200-foot notice 15 days before the Planning Commission. And so, it really is that residential replat, and we are doing the 15 days before the Planning Commission. Because I, I think, and as we've heard from you, is notice neighbors. Let them know that things are, are changing and they should come and have their chance to give their voice. And so, we, we are going with what the more strict local ordinance is that still follows the state law, but we, we are just a little bit stricter in that area. So, this is the spreadsheet. We tried to contact a few other cities and they just really didn't have a lot of information for us. But we did contact Abilene, Del Rio, Midland, Lubbock, Waco, and Wichita Falls. They are staying within the 200-foot buffer. They have, they have been, actually Eagle Pass and Laredo have been asked to extend to a 300-foot buffer, and then they voted that down. They realized that would cause challenges. We didn't put them in here because they're technically not our sister cities. Some of them have, follow only the state ordinances. They don't really have local ordinances that deal with notification. They say, all right, the state has told us how we're going to do notifications. In some of those cities, they have both. And each one of those, Waco, Wichita Falls, and San Angelo, it actually comes down to that residential replat. Ours actually is a little bit older, and that's probably why theirs is the same way. It was older before this new House bill, I think about four years ago took place, that changed the replat. They do it for all the same case types, rezoning, special use, conditional use, variances, annexations, and residential replats. We did ask a very specific question. If we are doing a text change for something, do they notify? Do they do a buffer? Currently, the state law doesn't address that directly, and we have not, nor do these sister cities, and I haven't found one that does yet.
So, just to clarify, Aaron, when you say a text change, you're talking about changing the underlying zoning?
Not changing the underlying zoning, but we've looked at some aspect of our zoning ordinance.
Yes.
And some rule, and we have decided that rule doesn't really meet well with today. It's not zoning a piece of property, but it's changing the text.
You're within the ordinances, you're changing the text within the ordinances.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
And so, that would be, I'm not thinking of a great example, but maybe if we went to change the text of the short-term rentals rules.
Yes.
We would change that text somewhere. Do we need to notify? And currently, the state doesn't address that and we don't notify on those things. We'll come back to Acuna versus the City of Austin. Their legal department, as ours, has been looking at it. As you can see, that each one of them, whether they have their legal involved or they are discussing it as a planning team, we've been looking at it for probably six months to eight months, which generated the, the joint meeting, and we'll talk about that in just a little bit. So, towards the bottom, here's kind of our current normal thing. So, yard signs, our goal is 20 days to put those yard signs out there. That is not a required notification, but we do that as a local group thinking, we believe that's important. That is almost like the, the local standard of, hey, you're driving down the street and there's this sign, what's going on with that? Of course, newspaper and the letter. We also, as Jeff mentioned in an earlier case, that we do send it to the council member of that area, as well as the mayor. We also get the notification on the website. We are looking at adding the agendas to social media. It's very difficult to add an individual case to social media because you may be flooding the market, if you will. Here's 12 cases on the Planning Commission today. Now, again, like John said, we're not real comfortable picking and choosing. Well, we know this one's controversial, let's talk about that one. Maybe there's, maybe we figure out how to do that differently. We are working with our information team that potentially putting out the agenda possibly five days in advance. The hard part is getting that actually approved and saying, this is the, the concrete agenda. And even if you put it out to the media, do you get a strong response of citizens coming and saying, hey, I want to speak on that? We do our official posting three days that is required. And then we also sit on our, our planning website three days, all of the case information.
Just for clarifications, what's media?
Media would be like us sending out a media blast to KLST or San Angelo Live, sending them, hey, here's what our agenda is going to be talking about. They, they always seem to get it from our city website anyway, but it would be more of an effort of city staff sending that to the media.
Yeah, I was looking at more of the sources, so San Angelo Live, the radio, TV, or just?
Yeah, it would be radio and TV, yeah.
Our media folks, public information has a list of all, I mean, it includes radio stations, TV, newspaper, San Angelo Live.
Yeah.
If there's any media out there that's, that doesn't get those, they could be added. But I, I think it's a pretty comprehensive list.
And we would certainly rely on our experts that do that day in and day out for the city. They, they know the contacts and who to send it to, to get it to the right people, so. Then our case reports, our goal again is five days for applicants. So, before I move from this slide, is there any, there's a lot of information that's not real clean, but is there anything on this slide that y'all have questions about?
One thing that we are kind of broad, kind of fascinating in our office, let's step up for a second. What would maybe on the work site, having like a QR code or a QR, or did I miss that?
We haven't discussed that yet, but I do think that's for our discussion coming up of, is that an improvement that we want to do?
So, going back, I'm sorry, before you change, Aaron, just to clarify, notifications, that, that bottom section, is that what you're proposing to do, or is that what the city is currently doing? What, what's the?
The city is doing all those things, and Jeff, you might correct me, did we send anything to social media or media this, this cycle? Or are we looking at maybe the next cycle?
I guess that's up to, to us as a group, but we have not sent it, yeah, we wouldn't send it to social media.
So, I would say the social media and media are the, are some proposed things. Everything else in there is what we already do.
Okay, great, thank you.
Only really two of those, the newspaper and letter, are the ones that are required by state law. The others are what we're going above and beyond state and our local ordinances.
Have you looked at any statistics on those that don't have any business commenting, commenting? And it becomes more of a, of an issue that we're getting negative comments from those that just, they're just negative. I mean.
I do think there is, and I don't have hard data, but I think we have the feeling that, similar to the case today, that we had somebody that turned in that, no, I don't want that to happen. But they may not understand what is happening. And it had to do with the replat there on Melana Heights. So, a person across the street was opposed, but they, I bet if we actually had an opportunity to talk to them, they didn't know what was changing and they probably really weren't going to be opposed. They just figured, I got something from the city, my best answer is to be opposed.
My concern is with the media, you may contaminate the date or the, the notification with those that really matter versus those that have an opinion.
That is certainly a risk. That is, that is a risk. Because part of it is, how do you notify that local area this is really going to significantly impact? And then do we look at, you know, if we're doing a bigger case, like short-term rentals across the city, how do we, do we really need to notify that differently if we need to?
Okay, the other broad question is this 200-foot buffer, so that's a state requirement.
Yes.
Right? So, there's a rule about opposition to a case, where a certain percentage of opposing, can you explain that rule and how it applies on the state level? And I'm, and how it might apply to this notice?
Certainly give it my, an effort.
Okay.
How about that? Let me go back to this one. So, this image here on my left, your, your, I guess, hopefully your left too. That green line is the 200-foot buffer around the subject property. So, within that 200-foot, if there's over 20% opposition, that raises a red flag to planners to start calculating what is our percentage of landowners. And that's, that's a key there, is landowners that are in opposition. And that's something we may have to get a little more sophisticated about. Is it landowner, is it the person that's renting the home? Is there, there's some things there, some nuances there that we still have to get a little bit better on. We typically just say, hey, if somebody opposed, and then if it hits that 20%, we dig deeper. Are they landowners, are they renters, who's really being opposed here? And so, if you look at those number of properties around there, if you look at the one, what I'm just going to say is north to the straight north, that's a big, pretty big piece of property. That one landowner has more say than almost every one of those to the south. So, if they were opposed.
So, it's done by, it's done by proportion of land ownership?
Yes, and I'm going to turn to my.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's based on the land area.
Yeah.
In opposition. So, it's, it's not the, it's not.
Is it within the notification area?
Yes.
Yes.
And it's, and so, it's not, if, if only a portion of the property was, is within, it's only that portion that's within. So, it's a, I mean, I want to say it's a complicated calculation.
It is.
With, with computer mapping nowadays, it's not that complicated, but it does take a little effort. And Aaron may have been planning to mention this, but I'll just say it since we're talking about it. In cities where they have looked at increasing that distance, you basically have to do two calculations. Or, or, you know, you have to, if you send it out to people within 300 feet, you still have to do the 200-foot buffer because that's.
To meet the state requirement.
That's what you have to calculate. So, if somebody's outside the 200 feet, but within 300 feet, they can't count toward that 20% threshold. So, it complicates the calculations for that.
Okay, so what is, explain the 20% threshold.
If 20% of the land area within that buffer is opposed, then that triggers a supermajority vote at the city council, I believe, not the planning commission.
Not the planning commission.
Yeah.
Correct. And as you know, if the planning commission denies a case, that also triggers a supermajority at city council.
The one supermajority change, and Jeff just mentioned it, that I, and I did in my research, that is, if it's a residential replat, that supermajority affects here, under our, under our information. And that's because plats stop here, you guys are the end of the, of the plat cycle. So.
Okay.
So, expanding that boundary is tricky and challenging.
Yeah.
Does it notify more people, potentially? If you think about maybe one of the last annexations that we did, that was Arden Road, they really were just two landowners, the person that sold, the person the land, and the person that just bought the land. But that's not always the case.
Right.
And that, that's the challenging part. So, here's some of the things that we have done on the improvements. City staff has added the council member and the mayor to all notification mailouts. And Jeff, you might be the one that answers this, or Brandon. I think there was one section that we discovered that certain mailouts did need to be notified to the school district. I thought that was plats, but it might be extended to zonings and, and others, but I.
Annexations required.
Annexations, that's what it was.
Any utility providers and any school districts in that area have to receive a letter for notice for annexation?
Right.
Yeah, and another one is residential zoning. So, if you're rezoning something for any type of residential use, we also have to let the school district know. And my guess is that's for their school planning purposes.
Yeah.
It probably is more applicable to large, fast-growing cities because schools have to plan new schools and all that. So, they want to keep on top of new zoning, but that is also a requirement.
Yes. One of our biggest improvements is our GIS team, our geographic information system that manages our mapping. They have been working very diligently with the appraisal district to get data faster.
Yeah.
And update our maps faster. And that has improved our notification letters of, is this the right property owner and then it goes out to. And so, I think, I believe over time, you're going to see less people that say, well, I never received my letter. We, we are believing that they, they are receiving it based on the data that we're getting. So, I, I feel like that's been a great improvement, and so, we, we commend our GIS department for helping us in that area. Number three is kind of a direction from you guys, that city staff is working the zoning case first and then the plat cases. So, zone, you know, if it's a plat that doesn't trigger notification, so if it's not a replat, we, and we know there's a zoning case going to come with it, we try to work that zoning case first, and then we do the plat. And that zoning kind of is almost a de facto notice that, hey, something has changed in this, in this area. So, please come and visit with us, whether it's talk to the planner on the case, or come to the Planning Commission and, and figure out. So, that's an, an area that we've been working on.
Before you move on, that is a question for you all. Back when we had that annexation case that was controversial, you all had asked us, we don't want to see a plat case that's approved conditioned on zoning, we want to see the zoning first. The one question that we've gotten from some of our local firms that work with applicants is, would you be okay hearing those cases on the same day? So.
Yes.
So, if they're concurrent.
Personally, I don't, I didn't mean to speak for everybody, but the issue with the case, the, this whole discussion. the case, this whole discussion is prompted, was that the developer went through and we had multiple meetings about plating and discussions about access and egress and no, no notice was provided to anyone in that area until the zoning case came up. And they came in upset because all the legwork had been done. They, they should have been involved earlier on in the process where they could have discussions with the owners about maybe impacts of, of access or, or safety issues. So to me, if, if the only means for notifying the public on a, on a case like that is zoning, then I'd like to see it done upfront.
Yeah, and that was our thought that, in fact, in some ways, it's better to do it concurrently.
Yeah.
Because we're not notifying for the plat. If we're notifying for the zoning, having the plat on that same meeting actually gets those people here for both issues at once.
Yes, for all of it, yeah. I like that.
Now, not that we can require that, but we can allow that to go forward.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so in cases like that, it would be just a little bit of adjustment to the agenda that we'd have a rezoning and maybe that plat, and then go through the rest of the plats. That would just be that adjustment that we'd make as we get that agenda together.
So that, that case that we're talking about was one of those that it was going to be hard to satisfy all of this because all the people that were against it were outside the city limits, so they would not have gotten, they were outside the city limits, yeah, so that...
That's also true.
So that...
Very, very good point that Terry's making. So what do we do there?
Well, again, it's up to you all.
I mean, it's on, that property was on the boundary line of the city limits.
And you, you all could direct us that your preference would be to notify everybody within 200 feet, not just those within the city limits.
Okay.
That would be something we would, we'd probably have to amend our ordinance and bring back and get councils okay on that as well. But that's part of the kind of input we're looking from you all. Do we want to change it from 200 feet? Our recommendation is no, but do we want to notify those people outside the city limits? That's a question that's outstanding. And some of these other things are, Aaron will get there, but are there other things we haven't suggested that you might want to see us do to better notify folks?
What's the recommended process? If we approved it and then city council, you already stated that they were, you know, totally against going out any name that was outside of the city limit. So are you proposing we approve and then you take it back to city council to get their approval or what are the steps that come to mind?
Yes, any, anything you all recommend today, we will go back and, it depends on what issue we're talking about. Many of them will require a change to our ordinance and, or some of them will be just our practice. It doesn't necessarily be, it wouldn't necessarily be an ordinance change, it would just be the way we do things internally, our internal policies. But we would go back and look at amending those, and if they do take an ordinance amendment, they would have to come back to you all and then city council for final approval.
Okay.
Okay. So some of our supplemental notification, the development services division that I'm over has been tasked with trying to assist with updating our website. Now, the website for planning, development services, and building permits has a lot of information because we are trying to connect with developers, but we also need to recognize that we're also trying to connect with citizens, particularly with planning that have cases coming up. And so we are going to be working with our, internally as well as with our public information group that helps publish that website of what's appropriate, how do we, how do we pare down some of this information? We really need to, sometimes we do the shotgun effect of, all right, we're just going to put everything out there and hope that people can find it. Or do we narrow our focus and say, well, here's our top five application types that we need to get with developers, here's our cases and information about how cases progress and what's happening today. We, we are looking at probably January when that is all done, that we've got some drafts, that we've got some things changed, that we've kind of pared things down and worked better of giving very succinct information as opposed to paragraph forms. It seems like bullet points and lists are a little easier for developers to follow. Sometimes like as we put together the captions, we have those captions there. And this kind of also comes back to that next item of the QR codes. Well, all because you've got a QR code sitting out there in the field, it's got to read back to something and somewhere. So somewhere is going to be the website, but something puts pressure on our planners to get case information, even if it's just the basics, out fairly early. Plus, as they add things, whether it's their maps, their communication, they have to keep adding that to the website to keep it up to date. So if you go by on Tuesday and scan that QR code, you've got some information there. And if you go today, this morning, and you scan it, you've got the full information there, you know, what, what type of information is there? So that's something we believe we can do. We do need to test it. We need to work up a workflow for staff and how that would impact them and find the location on the website to make it happen.
We've got something here that you can activate, like all information for cases to do all the third Thursday, whatever.
Yes, we would probably have to identify, do we need to set a deadline on this that is notified when they pull up that QR code? Hey, here's the caption and the information, here's a contact person if you have questions about it, but here's the date that all the information will be put up for that case.
I would just caution though, I would be very hesitant to write something like that into our ordinances. We've already been sued once recently for not meeting the technical requirements of our ordinance. Part of that was due to incorrect information from the appraisal district, so I won't get into all those details. But the more steps we require, each one of those, if they're not met, is a reason for someone to sue to overturn a decision. And so again, I'd be very hesitant to place an obligation by ordinance on staff.
Sure, sure.
I would rather keep it as internal policies. Here's what we propose to do, and these are, you know, estimated timelines, but not obligations.
If anything, in my opinion, you put that QR code, it just takes you to your website to where they say, okay, I need to call your office to figure out what's going on.
Right.
You know?
Right.
Going back to putting stuff on the website, you can't put all that information on all the social medias. So, okay, if you were to do anything, just put a list of properties that, the address that are coming up. No details, they have to call your office to get that detail, but at least it might trigger, they see that, oh, this, this address is close to me, I need to check into that. You know, possibly.
I'm by no means an expert in geo-fencing and push notifications, but, you know, we're working on some stuff personally in my business, and that's something that we've looked at doing too. So I don't know how much extra that is for the city, but with a geo-fence, if you enter within a 200-foot perimeter, it would alert you of, you know, check the city website for pending zoning change or whatever the case might be, I don't know, just an odd.
Yeah. So that, that again is some, some options. Again, social media is an option. My worry with that is when does it just become more noise from the city? And if our social media outlets are really trying to help promote for Concho, like Nazworthy, animal sheltering issues, police issue, you know, those types of things. Not that planning issues aren't important, because they are, because that kind of helps us set the stage for all of that. I'm not sure that's the best outlet for everyone or the people in neighborhoods to get the information. Doesn't mean it's not important, but I think we need to be very strategic of how we put that as one of our options of how do we notify people?
If we had a website that the city managed, could it become, could, could all of the efforts to notify by social media, by QR code, by whatever, whatever the ideas are for notice, can we drive all of that traffic to the website?
I think that is probably the best spot because that's where we can put the most information and have it targeted.
Exactly.
Of what's actually happening with a specific case.
And that way, if you use social media, it would only be a notification. It wouldn't be a place to put comments. You could have it fixed where there are no comments. It's only for the notification and they can...
The planning commission agenda has been posted. Click on this link if you want information about the cases. And then it goes to the website that you've set up for the cases for notification.
Right.
Okay.
So certainly, let's have an open discussion of any other items that I didn't really list. I mean, I'm sure there's plenty of things.
Brittany's idea, I think, is pretty interesting about geo-fencing and it's pretty advanced. So I don't know.
It is. And again, I don't know how much is going into it. We're in the beginning stages of kind of, again, with my business, figuring a few parameters out, like based on like we stick a long sign out and like what radius can we pull from in order to send push notifications and whatnot. So it's cool, it's just, again, it, there's some work, legwork to be put into it.
And that depends on the staff that, you know...
Right. And I know you guys are overwhelmed and...
They're already working pretty darn hard and, you know, if we keep adding more and more things. And so do you have one person or a group of people that actually does the website? You send information to them and they do that or how does that work?
No, we do that internally. We, we are responsible for our areas of the website internally. And so we would have to figure that out and figure out what is the easiest way, particularly for a front-end planner, to, hey, I've got my information ready, let's get it up here, we're in a PDF, so it can be edited, here's what it is. And so that's, we have to work through, what is that workflow? When we have cases like we have today that we had, you know, three plats on consent and four other zoning cases, it's probably not that big a deal, but you think about some of our meetings back early part of the summer, late spring, where we had 10 to 12 plats plus four or five zonings, that's, that can be challenging.
Yeah, and it may be a trade-off. So if you're putting the needed information on the website, maybe you don't get as many calls that you have to return. You know, it may be a trade-off that way, I don't know. It would just be a kind of a trial and error, I think.
Correct.
Okay, so on my notes, I had the QR code idea, and I think that's a good one. And I like the idea of the QR code going to some general website for notification. So in terms of navigating this website, I had, I wrote down using maybe GIS, if you had the ability to go in and look at the GIS map and say, oh, okay, there's a case that's been flagged in my neighborhood and select that property so that you could see what the information was on it. Again, I don't know what our capabilities are. At least sorting by maybe single-member district so that someone that knows the neighborhood they're in can quickly, you know, reduce it down to the areas that impact them the most. Because like you said, we could have 20 cases on that website at one time and it could be difficult to navigate.
So we have seen some cities that do something similar. And again, it is a staff thing and we're looking to see if our current software capability has that potential. So really, it would be something very similar to that map, that you'd see that notification, you probably wouldn't see the notification ring, but you would see the property highlighted and that someone would be able to click that and it would pop up, here's the information that's happening with that property.
Yeah.
Now, we're not sure what all it's going to take to do that. We're investigating that and hope to have some reports back. Then it's really a combination of who does that upfront and how do we work with our GIS staff to help create those things. We would lean on it being much more just informational about, here's a case that's happening and here's the information that's going on. We wouldn't put it as a formal notification for the city, but here, if you're interested in this part of town, here's where you're looking at.
Yeah, I think it just needs to be a notification, just information, basic, where it is and just, just like as you have on the sign.
Yes. And I think we, over time, we're going to be able to tie all those things together with the QR code would read back to this, that they would click and see a map, then they'd get to see, all right, here's what's going on to it. We are, we, we feel like we're going to get there. It's going to take us a little bit of time to check out our, our software capabilities and then our staffing capabilities. Who, who can we identify within our staffing group that has the technical side to do these things and yet still able to run cases or run other development aspects of our development world that we do?
So the agenda is posted three days before the meeting?
That is correct. The official agenda is posted three days, yes. Seven to two hours.
So if, if you use the QR code and they were able to pull this up, just saying that there's going to be something coming up, and then maybe in three days before the meeting, update it at that time where they have a little more data, information.
Yes, yes. I, I think there's certainly capabilities that we can do that, that aspect of it.
Otherwise, you're looking at 20 days when you put the sign out, it's got a QR code on it, and that's got to be ready to, you know, the whole thing ready to go.
And that's hard to do for them.
That's why I say...
Because then you're looking at, well, are you extending the application further from the meeting or are you pushing the meeting further from the application? And that, that's not what any of us want to do. We want to keep that timeline slim, but still give information. And so that, that's our, again, like you said, trade-offs, that's one of our trade-offs. Well, how much stuff can we get ready and how soon so that people have information? But it's still correct and accurate that we haven't had to change some things by the time, all right, now here's the official agenda and, because obviously when they apply, we kind of go off of what they've applied for and their legal notice and their addresses and then we start digging into that research and it may change just a little bit as that case evolves.
I think if you just stay with the simplicity of the QR code when you put on the sign, direct them to your website saying that there's going to be, you know, some movement on this property, but then go back to your website, put the planner, and then, you know, with that information, you could do it all at once and it'd be very clear-cut because it's coming back to you. The more information you try to put, because developing the signs is expensive and then having to try to replace them with more data would be...
Yeah, and I agree, that was the other part of the QR code idea that I kind of battled with the cost and convenience. If you have the same QR code for the same website, for the same place that everyone goes for the information on whatever case it is, that makes your job easier.
And we would end up getting QR code stickers that would stick on the face of those signs.
Yeah.
And as they wore off, we'd be changing those out, but it would be...
But you wouldn't have to put a new QR code for every single case, for every, yeah.
A new QR code for...
Yeah.
Okay, the other things I've noted, the, I understand the state requirements about the 200-foot notification area and the challenges with expanding it. I think it's difficult to expand the notification area if, if you're coming back to this minimum requirement. I, I'm assuming that you can't change the, that, that opposition percentage, or can you? If you went to a 300-foot notification area, can you take it from 300 feet or is it back to 200?
I think we could extend the buffer, but I don't think we could change that percentage because that's going to affect the voting and all that stuff.
Exactly.
So no, I don't think you could do that.
Okay. The newspaper is just a formality. It's, and in communities like this where most people, a lot of people aren't taking the newspaper, it's just not a proper means. But I really like, and I could also understand that the city's concerned about cost, adding cost to, to this process. And we're not trying to, to make this burdensome from a financial standpoint. But I think what we've discussed is relatively low cost. And it's just, it's finding other channels and avenues to, to get the notice out to the public. So one of the notes that I made was the more notification we can provide to the community, the better. And I, I really stand by that. I think our citizens have a right to know what's going on and, and have their voice heard. And we've had some heated discussions that haven't broken the way that, you know, we might personally want them to, to go, but that's, that's part of the, that's part of the process. We have the right to debate it and express our opinions. So the other idea I had was, you know, at one point, we had Zoom calls and Zoom meetings. And I feel like there's a, having these meetings at nine o'clock on Monday morning poses a challenge to a lot of folks that, that might want to come in and, and voice their concerns about a case. Is there, is there a means for expanding the access that our community has to the meetings themselves where maybe we could set up Zoom for people that are sitting at their desk at work that could, that could participate and maybe share an opinion if they had one?
We currently stream it live on YouTube.
Right.
But that does not allow participation. And I think it's the participation piece that is the challenge. And if I understand, and Brandon, you might correct me, I don't think the way these... And if I understand, and Brandon, you might correct me, I don't think the way the state sees an open meeting, they would allow that now. They only allowed it under an emergency executive order during the pandemic. When the governor rescinded that, they would not allow that type of meeting to be an official open public meeting.
Well, I think that's true. This meeting couldn't be on Zoom, but I know we, especially during COVID, we were contacted by some firms that are looking at doing some expanded kinds of things. So while we would still have to meet in person, there may be options for bringing in public comments through some sort of virtual. And so that's something we can definitely look into. I know there are not many, but there are a few cities that are looking into that.
Okay.
I think on YouTube, there is like a live comment section where someone could type a comment, and I don't know if we could have someone watching that and read them out or not.
But if it's a case that involves them, like, our response time wouldn't be immediate, I wouldn't think, right?
No, and I'm just, I'm trying to think of ways to improve the access that the community has. And if the only way that they can really oppose a case is to come show up for this meeting on Monday morning, and they've got other obligations, you know, everyone has a job, and it's not easy to just take off and come in and wait your turn if we've got a big agenda in here.
Now, having said that, you know, when it's a controversial item, people do call, as you all know, you often get emails. And so we do have some options. It's not a live, interactive kind of thing, but we do get calls and emails and even every once in a while, a handwritten letter from folks. But that is an opportunity for people who can't show up. They do have means to express their support or opposition.
I know when I teach and I have Zoom meetings, they can see me, but I can't see them, but I can read all of their comments. So anyone in the room, you know, you could be kind of broadcasting it, and then one individual is looking at all the comments that are coming in. So we would never, from a Zoom, it would be just a one-way. They'd be able to see us, and then they'd be able to see the presentation. And if they had comments, they could go to anyone in here, and you would, you know, discuss them as they came up. But it would be a little simpler, except we'd have to change the way we sit, because now we would be on live TV if that's what we decided to do.
Yeah. Is part of your question, Travis, asking about if the time of the meeting can change?
Not necessarily. I mean, I think if we had this meeting after regular business hours, it might invite others to participate more frequently. But I also know the burden that that puts on the staff and everyone else in this room to have to come after work and attend a meeting.
I've worked in other cities that have done that, and it's almost, it's a trade-off of who you want, you know?
Exactly.
People with soccer practice and kids to pick up from school, some of them find it easier to come during the day. They just have to take off a couple hours from work, and they, you know, they can't do it in the evening because of other commitments. And so it's kind of a trade-off.
It is.
You also have shift work, you know, the hospitals, all that. So you have those people, so they're going to have to take off anyway if you have it at night or if you have it during the day. So, you know, nine o'clock on Monday may not be the best time, but it's been working for a long, long time.
Okay. The other thing I was going to comment on is the, and I saw in the information that you guys provided, there was some specific notification about the joint meetings of the Planning Commission and City Council. And there it is.
I might actually lean on John and Brandon to kind of talk through this. Just what I've talked with other cities is they're not real sure what that case means to their jurisdiction.
Right.
Our interpretation means that if there's some kind of change to a land use code, we've got to notify the land use people. And do we?
Are we going to be required as a city to send out a notice to every property owner that's impacted?
To every property owner that has that land use, or do a dual meeting with Planning Commission and City Council under the rules that they have kind of spelled out there?
So the only ideas I have here are that if we're headed down the road of a, okay, let me step back. I think that the joint meetings of the Planning Commission and City Council can be dangerous in terms of notification. There's a lot that can be done in those meetings that can't be done when the boards meet separately. So my preference would be to have the discussion, to hear the matters, even if it's for presentation purposes only, as we've done with some cases in the past. At least we're having the conversation about whatever we're going to discuss in a joint meeting, maybe as a planning commission, a month or two ahead of time, so that the community is, has another layer of notice and time to understand what's coming to them.
Chair Stribling, are you saying then, for an example, I don't know, you'd have a Planning Commission meeting first, just like this one, say it's a zoning case.
Yes.
You'd all discuss it. Then the next month, it would go to City Council, but that meeting might be a joint Planning Commission and Council. That way, you don't slow them down, but there's still the initial discussion at Planning Commission.
Yes. I'm saying that if there is business that necessitates by your determination a meeting of, a joint meeting of the Planning Commission and City Council, that the Planning Commission have an opportunity to maybe hear the business that's going to be discussed in that joint meeting, in their Planning Commission meeting ahead of that joint meeting. So that we have another, another opportunity for the public to be informed about what's being done.
So the way we get to the joint meeting is council has to prescribe an alternative type of notice.
Yes.
And we did that by resolution. So I think what they could do is when they do that, they say first, we're going to do a discussion item at Planning Commission and then have the joint meeting, so y'all have had an opportunity to discuss it.
And to your point, Brandon, that's the scary part of the joint meeting. The resolution for the meeting that we had last time simply stated that notice be sent out in the newspaper a couple of weeks prior. That's below a lot of other requirements in terms of notice that we have for a lot of the cases that we hear. And again, when those two boards meet together, there's a lot of things that we can do in a joint session that we can't do individually. It's really dangerous, I think, for the community.
Yeah. But you're not suggesting that we would send out notices, like written notices too, because that's what kind of the whole purpose of the joint meeting process.
No, I think that's the point, that's the purpose of the joint meetings, right? Is to avoid having to do that.
Yeah, because it could be thousands or, you know, whatever.
What I'm saying is that I think we need to do a better job of informing the public about those meetings and what's on those agendas. Hopefully, we can have the opportunity to discuss them as a planning commission before we get into those joint sessions, so that the public has plenty of advance notice of what's coming. And they can show up in those meetings, just like they can here, and voice their concerns if they've got them.
One thing we've talked about, it's looking like this may become something that we do have to do, is just like pre-scheduling maybe two joint meetings a year. And so you might hear these discussion cases, one in January, one in March or something. And then when June comes around, we bring three or four of those to that joint meeting. That way, we're not having, you know, six or eight joint meetings a year.
Yes.
But we can just kind of pre-schedule those, because they're usually not, well, they're often, they're always not for development cases, so they're not really holding anybody up.
Right.
But it would be for those ordinance amendments.
Yeah.
And then we could just have a regular cycle of every January and June, or whatever makes sense, to just have those pre-scheduled on everybody's calendar.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that's what our discussion internally has been, is we need to strategically do these. And so map out, as Brandon said, what does that look like from the direction from City Council to, we know the meeting's going to come, and do we, is that where we then target our true media and social media of, hey, there's going to be a discussion item?
Yes.
About this that may impact multiple people. Come to this meeting, and then there's going to be a joint meeting at another date, so that we actually target that information. It is about targeting your information, just like all you guys have to do marketing for your different businesses. You're targeting that information. We want to target our citizens so they have that information.
Okay.
Well, I don't have anything else to present. I do want to say thanks to Brandon and John and Zach for helping with this. This started out as probably about a 20-page report, and you go with way too much, and then you're like, hmm, let's get it down to something. Because you can go really crazy with notification stuff, but the more you stick with, hey, let's bullet point what's required and very simply state, this is what we do and what we need to improve on, I think that helps us. So thank you, guys, for helping me out with that.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Would it be too much to ask the city to send a notification letter, piggyback with a water bill?
We have some challenges with that. We can look into it. We've asked for some different types of notifications to go out in that before. There's a small fee, I think, but we can look into that to see.
I don't think it should cost more, because it's just one sheet of paper, with a water bill, and everybody looks at their water bills, you know?
Yeah, they contract with a company to do their water billing. We don't act, it's not done in-house, but we can look into that. That's a good suggestion. We can look into.
It's a great idea. Public comment. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium. Address the comments to the dais. Begin by stating their name and address, single-member district. Please limit all remarks to less than three minutes. I'm going to open it up for public comment. I am going to close public comment. Director's report.
I just had one thing. You all had gotten a public information request. I just wanted to give you a reminder that any correspondence to or from you in your capacity as a planning commissioner is something that is open to a public information request. You're required to save those, be able to produce them when requested. So just like with this recent one, some of you had emails, many of you did not have any emails, but, or even letters, things that you receive. As part of, you all, I think, went through that open records training, and that was part of that, is the requirement to keep any of those records and be able to produce them in cases where a citizen would ask for them.
John, in this, like with Sam, had some conversations, is are we required to record conversations such as written material?
No, it's literally a public record of a written, if there is a document, and that can be a digital document like email, but there's no obligation to note. Now, well, and I'll let Brandon answer this. If you did have a conversations with someone and took notes, those written notes would likely be a public record to keep if you did write.
Yeah. And also, when we compile a lot of that information, I mean, it comes to our office too, and so we look through it, and there may be exceptions to releasing some of that where we could withhold it, but we have to send it off to the Attorney General, and they review our decision and make a final decision. So what you give us may not be released, but it might. But yeah, if you have a written record of something, you should be keeping it.
Future meeting agenda and announcements. The next regular meeting of the Planning Commission is scheduled for 9:00 a.m. on Monday, October 17th, at City Hall, East Mezzanine Room, 72 West College Avenue. Adjournment. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Six zero, it's 10:30 a.m.